Are we on call? All right. It is eight thirty. It is September eighth, twenty twenty five. We are at the Aquarium Education Center located at seven oh six Navigation Circle, Rockport, Texas, seven eight three eight two, and I call this public hearing to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Cheney.
Here.
Commissioner Cashline.
Here.
Commissioner Russo. Commissioner Dutt Nick. Judge Garson.
Here, you've got a full court. Items for deliberation or action. Public comment will be taken on the proposed twenty twenty five tax rate used to fund the twenty twenty six budget. And announce date and time of the twenty twenty five proposed tax rate will be adopted. Jackie. Do you have our rates?
Yes, sir.
What's that?
The.
Not for the, not for this.
I didn't get.
The proposed rate is point three seven eight five zero zero. This does include the calculation for the new debt. The debt rate for this year would be point six four one two. We have M and O mosquito is the point zero zero nine. M and O for the county is point two eight five eight four three. Brother Bridge is point zero three two four five three. Blood debt would be point zero zero six two four five and blood M and O is point zero zero six six four eight seven. It has been posted as required. If there's any special questions.
No, this is public comment. Does the public have any comments? How long do we keep this open?
We want to keep it open. And that can start at eight forty five, so.
When will be the date and time of the twenty twenty five proposed tax rate will be adopted?
The, it is scheduled to be adopted on the twenty second of September at nine o'clock. We will have another public hearing that morning before the adoption.
Okay.
And then we'll be at eight forty five most likely.
Eight thirty. Eight thirty. The public hearing will be at eight thirty because we will also.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll just keep it open in case anybody wants to say anything.
Say, you know, five minutes.
Five minutes, all right.
Yeah. Good morning. Anna Marshall, Texas Department. I just want y'all to know and keep it on record. So everybody else will know that for the, we're going to be a little bit later this year getting tax bills out. We're going to be probably the middle of November. Normally I try to get them out by the middle of October. But the school district with their election this year, I don't want to send out two different notices. So where it confuses the public. Why we're paying one and then with the election, having all the habits during the election, then I may have to send out corrective notices, do refunds. So it's a lot easier just to go ahead and process the bills and send them out in November after the election. So everybody knows that your bills are coming out, which is probably about thirty days behind schedule this year.
Will we put something on your website or in the paper or post something? I mean, just to.
Yeah.
You're off. This is probably from a lot of folks.
We've been, I've been, all the entities know about it, so they're addressing it during, letting everybody know to the Presle District when they get their phone calls, they know it as well. Where my staff is notified, everybody as well, so. Just letting everybody know that it's, it's allowed, it's within Saxon, but it's gonna be a lot more convenient for them to not get two different bills possibly.
I think it's.
Same as I posted.
Yeah, it'll be a lot less confusing.
Sounds good.
And all, I'm sorry. Well, those results would be known to you by Wednesday or Thursday, right after that election.
Yes, and I'm going to start levy processing immediately as I get the results. And then that usually takes me about a week or so to get it to the print vendor and the print vendor at that time probably won't have as many clients because they should have already, majority of their clients already done, so they should be able to get in the mail pretty quickly. I have it scheduled to go in the mail November twelfth. Pending how software goes and how the levy process goes.
Does that election start on the fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we should know the next morning that I can start.
Sounds cool.
Thank you, Anna.
The other thing that I did want to bring y'all's attention as of September first, we require to do a taxpayer impact statement for in proposed taxes and the median value for a homestead property in Rockport or Aransas County, I'm sorry, is two hundred and seventy six thousand eight hundred and ninety. That is from the Presle District. They furnished that. The impact for tax rate that we is proposed is if you use the current fiscal tax rate, it would be a hun, it would be one thousand twenty four dollars and fifty cents for the property. It would, estimated tax rate for the proposed is one thousand forty dollars and three cents. And if we use a no new revenue rate, it would be nine hundred and eighty two dollars and seventy two cents. So the difference between the, the current year and the proposed rate that we're, rate that we're using is a total of twenty three dollars and fifty three cents for property of that town. It would be a little bit more of sixty five dollars if you use the no new, no new revenue rate, but just as between what we're currently have and what we're proposing is a twenty three dollar increase.
And, Commissioner, just pointing out to me that it's on the back of our.
Yes.
Agenda for.
We are required to put it on the agenda. We are required to notify everyone and make that available for everyone.
And it'll be on Truth and Taxation, same information. Is that correct, no?
It is required to have all tax rates. It is on every budget.
I was gonna say, that's the second one, yeah. All right, in this hearing, motion adjourned.
To adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo. I, Commissioner Dutt Nick. Judge Gar.
That says we are adjourned. Next meeting starts at eight forty five.
Thank you.
Good morning again. It is nine AM, we are at the Aquarium Education Center. It is the eighth day of September twenty twenty-five and we are at the education, Aquarium Education Center located seven oh six Navigation Circle, Rockport, Texas, seven eight three two, and I call this regular meeting to order. Uh, please stand and join me at the invocation.
Please join, I pray. Father, we're always thankful for the blessings of this new day you've given us. And sometimes we take things for granted, just like getting up in the morning and taking our first breath. But Lord, there's so many that struggle with even doing that. So we can always count our blessings of what we have or live in this great county and great state and great country. And we take that for granted, where people are suffering all around the world. And sometimes we let our guards down because we become complacent with where we are and the security that we're accustomed to. But as we approach this nine eleven anniversary, we realize then that we're not as secure, that anybody is vulnerable to terrorist attack. So we just pray for all of our elected officials and every part of our government that they would continue to keep us safe from those types of attacks. We just pray for these commissioners because they have tough decisions to make. And no one likes to have to raise taxes and approve budgets. But it's, it's part of protecting us and keeping us safe. So, Lord, we just pray that you give them the wisdom to make decisions for this county that benefits all the citizens, which in your name we pray.
Amen. Please join with the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in discreet public, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as far on with the statements by my fellow citizens of cities, Texas, one state, under God, one community.
Thank you, roll call.
Bishop Cheney.
Here.
Bishop Cashline.
Here.
Commissioner Russo.
Here.
Commissioner Duke Nick.
Here.
Judge Garson.
Here, we've got a full court. At this time, we hear from citizens, you heard, I've got one signed up. Uh, Mr. Makes.
Yeah, makes four ten Linden Street, Rockport, Texas. Judge Commissioners, I appreciate you letting me be able to speak. I enjoy most of the artwork that we have in our community. And I believe our latest, greatest success was the mural fest that we had. That was just outstanding, beautiful. This being said, I'm not for the rendition of the artwork that would be displayed at Celebration Plaza. I am all for all types of artwork that will promote the theme of Rockport Fulton and Aransas County. I would like to see that artwork represent, promote, and be displayed that highlights the history of our community. I would rather see a statue of a windswept ox that we have down on the beach road. Or maybe another option would be the history of the railroad with the cattle industry back in the day. May I quote, "The Rockport Fulton Cattle Company refers to the Coleman Mathis Fulton Cattle Ranch, born in Rockport in eighteen seventy-one by George Fulton and others, which later evolved into the Coleman Fulton Pastures Company. It was a major South Texas cattle enterprise known for its large acreage, pioneering efforts in fencing pastures and early meatpacking and shipping operations from the Rockport Raiders. This ties our community together and highlights the Fulton Mansion and also the depot that we've just recently been restored. If we could put, I think, just throw something out there, a statue of a few lawnmower walking up a ramp, it would tie the Fulton Mansion together along with the depot as we're Rockport community, so I appreciate your time and thank you guys."
Thank you, Mr. Makes. Anybody else calling, anybody online? All right. We'll move on to presentations of proclamations. Item number one, presentation by Ray Presley regarding the Aransas County appraisal district. I don't see Ray here. Matt? Are you here?
I'm here.
No, are you here, uh, speaking? Are you right?
I, I was planning to present with Mr. Presley, I haven't spoken with him, but I assumed he'd be here this morning, I apologize. Would you like me to proceed or?
Would you like, would you rather have him here? We could, um, move this to another meeting, the next meeting.
I'm at y'all's pleasure, whatever you like.
I prefer him.
Nothing's time sensitive.
Yeah, I prefer him here just so that we can meet him and, and see.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you. I'm going to strike number one from, well, it's a presentation. Item number two. We'll see my
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah. Well, item number two is, uh, I guess, do we, um,
Proclamation, I'm going to go ahead and read it.
Okay, proclamation P thirteen twenty twenty-five, Texas Navy Week.
Whereas in January eighteen thirty-six, the First Texas Navy, the official Navy of the Republic of Texas, consisted of four hastily purchased and minimally equipped schooners, invincible, ruthless, independent, and liberty. Whereas under the command of Commodore Charles Edward Hoffens, the First Texas Navy helped win the Republic of Texas independence by preventing a Mexican blockade off the Texas coast, seizing ships laden with war supplies destined for Mexico. The Texas Navy was able to confiscate and supply much-needed materials to the Texan forces. And whereas by October eighteen thirty-seven, all four ships had been lost at sea, sunk by the Mexican Navy, renограмmed, captured, or sold. And whereas in eighteen thirty-nine, with Mexico's continued refusal to acknowledge the independence of the Republic of Texas, the Texas Congress acquired six new vessels to become the Second Texas Navy, including this steamship Zavala. And whereas the Second Texas Navy played an important role in the outcome, protecting supply lines with the United States while blocking vessel traffic from Mexico. In eighteen forty-three, although outmanned and outgunned, the Texian fleet defied all odds when its sailing vessels defeated Mexican steamship, ships at the Battle of Comanche. Over time, all seven of the vessels were lost and only part of one of those ships are scraps of the boiler from Zavala, which now resides here in Rockport at the Texas Maritime Museum. And whereas Texas annexation incorporated the Republic of Texas into the United States. And as a result, in eighteen forty-six, the Texas Navy merged with the United States Navy. And whereas the story of the hardship and savage fighting of those small fleets of battleships and intrepid seamen was largely forgotten until the Third Texas Navy was established as a commemorative organization by Governor Price Dan O'Connell in nineteen fifty-eight. And whereas in nineteen seventy-three, the sixty-third Texas Legislature passed a resolution that ratified the Texas Navy as an official state organization devoted to preserving the history of the three navies of Texas. And whereas, as directed by the Texas Government Code Title Six, subtitle B, section six six two point zero five two, A Navy, B Texian Navy Day shall be regularly observed by appropriate ceremonies and activities. Whereas each year on the third Saturday of September, Texas celebrates Texian Navy Day, remember the brave soldiers who helped make Texas a bastion of liberty and opportunity. This year, the Texas Maritime Museum will honor the Texas Navy with a program at the museum on September thirteenth and an expanded Texas Navy exhibit that will be in place through the end of the year. Now therefore, Aransas County Commissioners Court does proclaim September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five through September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, as Texas Navy Week, as we commemorate, celebrate, educate, honor, and support the Texas men of Ireland sailing in their ships of wood.
Do, do we have to vote on proclamations?
Because you're signing it.
Okay.
Bishop Cheney.
Hi.
Bishop Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo. Commissioner Duke Nick.
Hi.
Judge Garson.
I don't think there's a motion.
There's not.
There was no motion on the floor. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept proclamation P thirteen twenty twenty-five.
Go again?
Yeah, let's go.
Bishop Cheney. Bishop Cashline. Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Duke Nick.
Hi.
Judge Garson.
Hi, motion passes.
And I just mentioned they are going to have an event at the Maritime Museum this Saturday. I think it's from ten till two.
All right, I number, well, do I motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm not, second.
You've got a, a motion and a second, and I just want to acknowledge some donations, a memorial donation to the Aransas County Public Library from Ronnie and Pat Barker in the amount of fifty dollars in memory of James Jim Elliott Freibel. And let's see, also a donation of blankets and pillowcases from Elaine McCollum to be distributed by the Aransas County Assistance Department to residents that need them.
Um, I'd like to speak to that just
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. McCollum also resident several years ago. But prior, three years prior to that, she started making quilts and stuff, or she had a whole bunch of quilts. She asked me one time, she'd walk out there with it, and I said, tell them to the county and, and we'll make sure they get some good people. And so they started that, she started with one helper, but then, then it ended up with three or four of the quilting seed in San Antonio that she lives in, in, in La Vermaire. But they started, and this was the last donation to donate, he's a, game, he'd be timing, so in all of seven sent, well over two thousand blankets have been donated to this organization. And so it's not taken one thing. Uh, and they don't live in our county. And they didn't have anybody here of nine eleven. They didn't have anybody here at, at, at the, they're just here, they've just all come here, they're all aware of Rockport. But I want to personally thank them for that because I've gone out and made three or four loads up there and we brought them down and I'm going to speak for it. It's well over two thousand blankets and probably at least half that much pillowcases. And the pillowcases said, well, why would we need pillowcases? We found out that pillowcases are one of the most sought after things for the homeless because it's something to put their stuff in. And I had never thought about that, but maybe the child has a teddy bear or something like that and can't carry it around, you know, all the time. And or something real special for a child or even an adult. And so I want to personally thank them.
All right, thank you.
Bishop Cheney.
Hi.
Bishop Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Duke Nick.
I'm Judge Garson.
Hi, motion passes, item number eight.
Move to approve the request from the Rockport Center for the Arts to place a sculpture by internationally renowned French artist Bernard Binet in the Celebration Plaza courtyard of the new Aransas County Courthouse. He is a celebrated conceptual artist, recipient of the twenty-sixth International Sculpture Center's Lifetime Achievement Award, and recognized worldwide for his dynamic, thought-provoking, large-scale works. I would also add, this is at no cost to taxpayers. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second? Sorry.
Second.
Thank you.
Morning. So we have an opportunity to expand the footprint of those sculpture gardens. There are really two in town already. The one where the old art center resided of downtown where the new campus is. And there are a few published art sculptures around town, both the Fulcher Art District and the Art Center. We've kind of maxed out the space and we're looking how to spread our arms into our larger community. So this is an opportunity to look at our family as a sculpture gallery. I'm here today to propose the installation of a prestigious, large-scale sculpture in Celebration Plaza, defending Aransas County Courthouse in City Park. The work that we are considering was created by Bernard Binet, an internationally acclaimed conceptual artist, recognized worldwide for his dynamic, thought-provoking, large-scale works. His works are in the Mercedes-Benz collection. They are on the campus of the Denver Colorado Convention Center. They're on the MIT campus. He's a very established artist in the sculptural world, even if he's not familiar to us. The sculpture will enhance our cultural identity, elevate our county's reputation as an arts destination, and provide educational and community engagement opportunities. His sculptures actually are mathematically precise. There's an educational component that you may not see when you first encounter the sculpture. The sculpture is proposed to be installed in Celebration Plaza, a highly visible green space that is accessible to residents and visitors year-round free of charge. The sculpture is on loan, we're not purchasing it. It's not a permanent forever installation, it's on loan, just as work in the Art Center Gallery is on loan. It will be for sale. If, if it is sold, it will leave before the one-year loan agreement term is up. Or if it is unsold at the end of the one-year loan term, we have the options to discuss a renewal. So we're proposing this to be here for one year. All transportation, installation, insurance, and maintenance costs will be paid for by RCA. There will be zero cost to the county. The sculpture located in a public courtyard allows free access for all. Exposure to world-class art fosters cultural growth and appreciation for Exposure to world-class art fosters cultural growth and appreciation for contemporary artistic expression within our community. The installation stimulates curiosity and dialogue, as we've already encountered this morning, encouraging intellectual and visual engagement among viewers. Hosting a globally recognized artist's work enhances the cultural profile and identity of our county. A prominent sculpture boosts the county's image as a vibrant arts community and cultural tourism destination. Non-traditional public art draws local and international attention, increasing arts visibility in the region. Prestigious artworks reflect commitment to innovation and elevating local artistic standards. The initiative supports long-term growth, positioning Aransas County as a hub for arts and culture. The sculpture inspires local youth, sparking creativity, encouraging reflection on the role of art in society. It fosters community dialogue and cultural exchange and exchange through public art and shared experiences. Again, we've already begun a conversation before I even came to the podium this morning about public art. The sculpture offers students and artists opportunities to engage with contemporary and global art ideas. And integrating art into public spaces promotes lifelong learning and cultural awareness in our communities. Public art installations attract cultural tourists, increasing hotel occupancy taxes and visitor spending in the community. Increased visitor spending supports local businesses, restaurants, and hotels, boosting our local economy. The art installation enhances the region's cultural reputation, drawing attention from art enthusiasts and collectors beyond the local area. This partnership brings a significant artwork to the community without taxpayer costs, creating a shared cultural value. The sculpture symbolizes civic pride, innovation, and a commitment to the arts and community identities. The Rockport Center for the Arts board and staff officially request approval to proceed, highlighting the art's transformative role of cultural enrichment.
When Karen first came to me with this idea, first things I wanted to do was talk to Renee Butler, who's our facilities maintenance person, to see what all would be needed for the upkeep or groundskeeping around this and getting her concerns or just her questions, the fact that Karen, we don't need to worry about the water spraying on it if we ever, if we don't need to worry about weed eating, it's like tin core.
Core ten.
Core ten steel, so that won't be an issue. So the facilities department is perfectly fine.
Yes, you can weed eat up to it and have the well water. You can't really hurt that core ten steel.
Oh, who's going to have the insurance on?
The art center will cover that.
Yeah, they, they'll cover all. And I would say I'm more of a traditional art aficionado. That's mostly what I have in my home, but I do have a few contemporary pieces. But what Karen is saying is true. My husband and I have gone places to see the art, like in Marathon, which there's not much going on in Marathon, Texas. They have a great amount of sculpture in the Gage Gardens. And at the campus of Silver Cross over in Alpine, they do have some really nice public art pieces, some of which are more traditional, some of which are more contemporary. When I saw this, I truly thought of bracelets on someone's arms, just like a giant-sized arm. But I think it just adds to the prestige and the reputation of this community as an arts community. So I would hope we can support this.
And I'll be honest myself. Personally, it doesn't appeal to me in a lot of ways, I guess, to me from a rural background. It reminds me of something you might find out now around some farm equipment. But by the same token, it is, you know, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. It's a, it's a discussion point, and we did have an opportunity at first to try to have a little garden there, trying to do some stuff. And, you know, I would hope maybe at some point in time, being this is alone, we could find something that is more appropriate, maybe even move some of our other pieces around into that where, because we have a more or less a historical appearing plaza there in some ways, and it just seems like to me, and mom and I know they see some kind of lens with the buildings and all that, but I'm okay with this.
I, I think that, I think you brought up the, neither that a portion aside or visiting arts, you know, that, that come in and do something like this, you know, that kind of might be a bit of an art, but but I can see where that would come and, and, you know, stay there for a while, and then maybe somebody else, you know, the art center, you know, find something else that somebody buys it proper, whatever. But where we have a place where they can come and talk to the judge and turn it on the Commissioners Court to put new art there every so often. And, you know, we don't have to worry any longer than to worry about a lot of other stuff there. We're not going to do a water fountain there. But I, I think that's a good idea to do something like that.
And there, there is an artist who is, I think, working with the art center, who's very interested in doing that. He's done that in other locations, Corpus Christi, New Orleans, places out on the eastern seaboard. But he's really excited about doing this here. He lives over in Bayside area and this would be.
So we have an ongoing issue with the contractors. Do we think that this isn't going to affect that in any way?
I don't think so. No, it'll be fine. I just want to comment that, you know, what I love around, about Aransas County is there's a little bit for everybody. So I, when I'm in Lubbock, one of my favorite things to do is to go and look at the sculptures in Lubbock, contemporary, I don't know, all the terms, modern, but I do know there's a couple of Hastings Morales, and I like going over there and look at them because he's one of our own, so. I do support this, and I don't think there's a problem with, with the contractor.
Be honest with you, I, I think you can take that further to talk with the demo. You know, because they're fixing to develop that whole area over there, and there's a lot of rentals there where you can do something similar. And, you know, if we're going to be a, going to have art around at the education center for college, would be an awesome slide to do something.
I think Michael would like to do that. He was working with Texas A&amp;M, Corpus Christi, for a couple of years, and Kelly Mueller, the president, was very excited about the possibility of doing it.
This is an eye-catching piece. I mean, this is, it's going to get someone's attention, and they walk over, take a look at it, and they found it in their computer, so. Because I want to look at it myself.
Yeah.
Hang a little Texas snow, and you're thinking, nobody like.
All right. Thank you, Karen.
Bishop Cheney.
Aye.
Commissioner Cashline.
Aye.
Commissioner Russo.
Aye.
Commissioner Dugnitz.
Aye.
Judge Garza.
Aye, motion passes, I number nine.
Move to approve the Rockport Road to the District's second floor for twenty twenty five.
Twenty second hand.
Got a motion, a second.
To these four and full street. Okay, April, June, I'm a little bit late with this one. I've been a little bit busy with Mural Fest and a few other things, economic, the ecosystems summit. Beautiful picture by John Martel. Oh, do I have it? You know, sorry, I'm waiting on you. Okay. Well, I'm going to roll through these. We're still, we're still pursuing the Rockport Railroad Park, which is the property between Magnolia Street and Austin, working to develop and expand the railroad museum there, as well as seeing the existing footprint by putting a caboose on the north side of the railroad depot building. This will add a tremendous benefit for us from tourists and will draw quite a few people. So we're still working on that. It's a very lofty goal, but we are working it, and hopefully we'll see that come to fruition. This just shows you a little bit further information on that piece of property. Shows you the rail and where it would be, and the two rail cars would be on there, on that rail track. We've put curves on the Peter Street and the Magnolia Street side. Like Peter Street is targeted to be the, the north entrance for the hardware development, and so that's, that's a very important street there. Continuing to work to write art into the depot museum. Our mantra is art by nature. So it's everywhere, as you can see, as we've already heard this morning, as well as history, all ties together. In this quarter, I also presented with Kay Betts and Vicki Merchant, the Art Colony Documentary at a statewide level at the Texas Historical Commission Annual Conference was extremely well received. We got a lot of great feedback, and I continue to get feedback on that presentation, as well as the Historical Art Colony Documentary. Film friendly initiatives. So I was in Austin last week with Carla Tank. This is Carla. We were there for the new Senate Bill twenty-two, which was authored by Todd Hunter. Not only did we attend the first meeting in Austin, you know, that was effective last Monday, September first, and that is one point five billion dollars over the next ten years to the film industry in the state of Texas. So Carla and I attended that meeting on Tuesday, and then we also met with Angie Flores and Todd Hunter, actually pulled him off the House floor, about the incentives. He's very, very serious about bringing film to Aransas County. And then also just to follow up, Building a Legacy is our most recent documentary. It's the story of Charlie Belair and what he has done from an environmental standpoint over the past, really his entire life, dealing with our ecosystems up and down the Gulf Coast. It has been entered in the film festival here at Rockport Center for the Arts in November, so you'll see it there. Some of you saw a little preview of it at the summit when we had. Continue here, this is on that same subject. Continuing with the wildlife habitat, as you know, that's the cultural interface surroundings has, has morphed into county right-of-way, city right-of-ways, as well as the spirit columns, the Aurora sculpture next to the cultural interface. Information here on the ecosystem summit, it was fantastic, a hundred and twenty attendance. Would have been more if we'd had the availability, but you can see the stats there, of visitors inside and outside of seventy-five miles. Quite a great group of speakers there at that event. We continue with second Saturday in the district. We continue adding more music as well as more entertainment in the district on second Saturday, as well as food vendors. We started adding food vendors. Preparation for Mural Fest was underway quite a bit during this quarter, and I'll talk to you in the next quarter about the results of that. Continuing to promote murals, promotes tourism, promotes economic development, which benefits to this community as well as the town.
And I'm heights doing that too.
What, Mural Fest and Murals?
Yeah.
You know, it's just been super popular all over. Even internationally, you know, Jeremy Flores, who worked with us here, he is, since he did the film of the murals at Lot, Lotum on the fence, he has become internationally known muralist, and so we had him back here for our mural fest. So, so numbers here from the Texas Historical Commission, they're software, data, this is our footprint for the cultural arts. This shows trends. You can see certain spikes from those trends. See it going up at the different times. State institution, we continue to have San Antonio be our, our top tourist draw, Austin, Houston. What I see here is, and how I measure this is a three-day trip visitors days. Those are what I consider two nights for three-day trip visitors. Nothing is, is exactly perfect with this. This is a lot of calling by phone. But you consider three-day trip visitors. You had, you had, this is coming in three times, even that cultural distance boundary.
I didn't understand those graphs. That was when I told you I had a question.
That was your question.
They all say a hundred percent.
Where do you see a hundred percent?
On the bar.
On the Y.
Where?
Tension. Come in. See, on the left-hand side, it's twenty, forty, sixty.
I, I really don't, don't use, I use the, the top numbers.
Okay.
Because that, that showed you how many people came in and out of the cultural district within so many days, and I use three, three-day trip visitors. So what that tells me is of those days, there were at least two people, two nights, assuming they stayed in hotels, right? There were two nights that they stayed and came in back and forth and visited the cultural district. Whether it was for Texas Maritime, or for murals, or Center for the Arts, whether it was for our shopping, they were in and out of the cultural district at least three days. So if I narrow that down, that's two nights. They were here.
This number, these numbers are based on geodata from cell phones?
It is. It's based on geodata from cell phones. It's collected by the Texas Historical Commission, or that specific footprint.
So then, bar graph, we can really just discount, does it be?
Yeah, I, I really look at the numbers at the top. I don't really look at the numbers at the bottom.
So you're saying that it goes four-day visit, or you're saying that cell phone number in that, in that district, four days?
Yes, yes, that's what that means. And then this even breaks down further, the income level, education level, ethnicity, age, kind of give you a little bit further breakdown, and again, it's all tied to cell phones.
And these have changed from previous quarterly reports, and maybe that's because this is including some of the summer, and so that's why the mix changed.
Could be, could be. You're probably going to see a lot higher age level as we get into the winter.
Yeah.
Reporting areas. This is also not for the full quarter. There's a three-week lag time, so you'll see it's through June twenty-first. Most of these, I have to produce reports for the city as well, so I get the reports as farthest out as I can, but there is a three-week lag time. And then these are quarterly financials. Which Nick Johnson does an excellent job. And that is in the.
They're great, y'all.
Thank you very much. It was fun work. It was a fun work, a fun one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Aye. Bishop Cashline.
Aye.
Commissioner Russo.
Aye.
Commissioner Dugnitz.
Aye.
Judge Garza.
Aye, motion passes. Ida number ten.
Move to further distribution of hundred and two thousand, three hundred and twenty-two thousand. While I thought for a huge, very sharing out annual payment to local governments for the administration under their administration for this for your twenty twenty-four received in one.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Good morning, Madam Treasurer.
The county receives funds every year for the well left, the huge revenue sharing. We usually get it earned in June. And come July, I started getting worried, trying to find about even when the money was going to come and stuff, and got in a hold of somebody that was there the year before. July went by, August, and so I found out when we received the money, actually late August, I found out that some of the staff had left, and then it was pretty scary. The budget was, wasn't appropriated yet and all that. So we didn't get the money. Thirty-four thousand is what the county is getting, which we had budgeted thirty, and then we will distribute the navigation district and the school districts money to them, which they were looking for also.
The school district's getting about sixty-four days.
Right, and, and so I, I knew it, like we've been doing for many years, but, oh, right, and it's for the tax levy that the tax assessor gives me, and that's probably the best way to distribute something.
So the hundred and two thousands off the board for everybody.
Right.
Our forty weeks, how much?
Thirty-four, eight to get behind.
Most strict.
All right, thank you.
Bishop Cheney.
Aye.
Bishop Cashline.
Aye.
Commissioner Russo.
Aye.
Commissioner Dugnitz.
Aye.
Judge Garza.
Aye, motion passes, I number eleven.
Move to approve authorizing county judge to sign contracts with Copeau for testa archival storage solution services, or just for the county clerks. Projected, uh, so two oh nine oh three six, two oh eight oh two seven, two oh nine oh nine two, and two oh nine one six five one O, and District Clerk project, S O two oh nine one seven one two three.
Second.
Got a motion and second.
Um, I have not had verification that this contract has been viewed to by the attorney at this point. Um, with the loss of the civil attorney and I sent it to everybody I knew to send it to, but I've not had verification that this has been to an attorney. But this does start on October first, this contract. Um, profiles contracts are pretty simple. Don't feel there would be a problem in signing it, but I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Great.
This is basically the same contract we've had in the past.
An amendment adding more time for that storage fee for me and adding the district clerk's uh, records that they are working on, they will store those as well, um, for one year, and it can be extended at the same price. Should we not leave, leave any part of the house with proper fire suppression system within that year?
How, how much is it for?
It's five thousand dollars a month, which is what we have been paying for over a year.
So we could amend this to approve your signing it upon review and approval from our attorney.
I made my motion to real select.
I think so. Thank you. Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
All right.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number twelve.
I moved to approve a contract renew with Austin Wood Recycling Incorporated, Randus County and Austin Wood Recycling, entered an agreement on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five for an initial term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five with four-one, we do a lot of soft gas running services.
Second, Dan.
Got a motion second. Mr. Van Meter.
Yeah, I'd just like to open for it for the question. Sorry. Uh, an agreement between Austin Wood and the county. New purpose is a brush cutting. Yeah.
You satisfied with the one?
Absolutely. We're sending it. The price they're offering is reasonable. Uh, the last time we opened for bids, they were astronomical. So we had to reopen the process and we got into it. We were really satisfied with the profit.
And we just started working with them in April, so that's a fairly new contract.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is a renewal of that contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Same price.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any questions? Thanks.
Commissioner Cheney.
Wow.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number thirteen.
I moved to approve authorizing the county judge to sign a notice to proceed, clean or land this county. Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, grant project for the United States Army for Engineers, army detention request. Now, Federal Department of the United States Agency, last Texas Division of Leadership Management, has a mitigation grant program, subaward agreement, or G R dash one three two dash, one five, provide federal funding for grant management and construction of the project. Gulf of Mexico Energy Security Act funding may be utilized for the United States Army for Engineers permit extension request.
A second, Dan.
We got a motion second. Morning, Al.
Good morning, Judge Martin. Commissioners, this is just the last step in getting on Stan Tech notes to proceed so they can write our extension letter for Lamar Beethrow, which is due December thirty-first.
So under funds in the background statement, you mentioned the Coastal Erosion Planning and Response Act. Grant app was submitted May first and we're awaiting possible notification. What is our plan of now award is granted?
And then we'll use the GOMESA funds.
Okay. Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number fourteen.
Move to approve the execution of the notice to proceed with lowering property.
Second, Dan.
Got a motion and a second. Ms. Jackie.
Yes, uh, the contract order was agreed upon by which the court is about eighteen. This is just the last step to give you the notice to proceed. This will be the appraisal for any, uh, properties or any of the.
So just to confirm, this contract has been reviewed by.
Good question. Commissioners have already approved it.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number fifteen.
To approve authorizing county judge to sign an annual agreement, the Texas Department of Transportation for the twenty twenty-five routine airport maintenance program, grant M two six one six R C K P, which reimburses ninety percent of costs for eligible airport maintenance projects up to one hundred thousand.
Second.
Got a motion second. Good morning, Mr. Gear.
Good morning. This is the, uh, time of year where we renew this, uh, grant. And it is, uh, in the past, it's been fifty percent. The last, last year they did ninety percent. They're going to continue that uh, for the foreseeable future. It's not ever guaranteed, but, uh, we're certainly happy to have it. And, and we generally exhaust this grant every year.
Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number sixteen.
Move to approve authorizing payment to Wake Point, our reseller partner, to renew our mission critical server software hardware licensing at total cost of a hundred twenty-nine thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents, which is due by September the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Got a motion second. Colin, give us the good news.
The good news is, um, we were expecting them to give us a three-year renewal only option, and they did give us a one-year. Um, initially the three-year option that they were going to give us cost more than the original project to install this equipment and hardware was by almost a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Um, no, they did give us a one-year, but it is a take it or leave it by September eighteenth.
And this is the budget, but we don't have any other options.
We don't have an option. Uh, they are taking pretty much anyone and everyone to court if you don't pay their licensing fees.
And what is this? So we could have?
This is our main servers that runs payroll and basically our day-to-day operations.
Very important.
Yeah. What's that mean by retail?
They're, they are the authorized partner to, uh, quote and resell on behalf of the company. They are also, they are the, excuse me, they are also the company that originally one, um, prevailed when we did an RFP for the original issue of the year.
Okay, but more of the reselling that's long.
They are reselling the licensing on behalf of Broadcom. The provider of the software is.
We're high. Selling to the, we're not, we're not selling them anything. They're selling us.
Yeah, they are selling us, uh, the licensing rights and, and they're basically the value-added reseller, as it's termed in the industry.
And they quite a bit of value for themselves. I thought your background was a pretty, um, strong summary.
They're, they're, they're not, they actually have marked it down to where they're getting absolutely almost fair, right? Even any kind of profit for government entities, and this is under the DIR contracts that they're trying to honor. But even those contracts aren't being honored.
And how likely would normally be budgeted for this year?
Hmm, twenty-fourty to fifty thousand.
It's almost like it's. So where are we looking for next year?
Next year, we won't be paying anything to this company if, um, our replacement project goes through, which is to rip and replace, and we won't be dealing with, um, Broadcom's, um, licensing fees.
So we've been doing it ourselves.
We, we would have a different company come in and they're a competitor to Broadcom that most, um, organizations that are leaving Broadcom are choosing to go to, that are one of the competitive entities out there.
Is this, uh, service that tax bureau could provide to us?
It is not.
Okay.
Becky Jensen.
I did want to mention that I had asked Colin to put this on there, um, basically so we could get approval to pay since it is due prior to the next commissioners court, so we will be, we'll be able to bring this, um, today.
And you do have money in your budget, right?
I guess so.
Yeah, to cover it, yeah. All right.
Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Detective.
Hi, motion passes. Item number six, seventeen.
Motion to approve accepting the coastal fan base and estuary programs, funding award of eighty thousand dollars for the Aransas Pathways Airport Kayak Launch Site Improvement.
I'll send you that.
Got a motion second. I want to, I'll go for it. I want to introduce Jim Farnsworth. He's with Arans County Pathways.
Well, good morning, um, and thank you all for putting us on the agenda. We did receive after working with coastal bays and estuaries, a grant of eighty thousand for just the boardwalk, and that was part of the master plan that we had come to the commissioner's court with. We still have road work to do and others that we'll do in conjunction, probably roads and bridges. Um, but this is a great addition and it's, this project already now with Stan Tech for engineering, so we can then start to bid it once that's finished. Right, this will be a great move.
And I want to commend Jim for his, um, doggedness in identifying and pursuing grants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo that. Thank you for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number eighteen.
Move to approve the second miller and Jake McClary with wheels, W Allen's work. We continue providing legal services related to the rent and court house project authorized as not exceed the amount sixty thousand dollars and drop out of county judge that's something else.
Got a motion second and, uh, commissioners.
I have a question.
Okay.
We are agreeing to engage this firm for additional services, which is fine. They've done a, excuse me, tremendous job. But I see that it actually is going through Lloyd Gosling, and I'm wondering if it can go straight to the county.
Well, when we originally hired them, they were a subcontractor, Lloyd Gosling. I mean, we could do that, but we.
It would delay this.
It would. It would. I don't know. It would.
There any future extensions? Could we look at having them directly with the county instead of?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
Any questions? Other questions? All right.
Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number nineteen.
Good morning. Good morning. As you can see, we just ended our fiscal year, uh, eight thirty-one, and we spent three hundred sixty-five thousand, three, four hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents, which is twenty-three point five nine percent of our G R T L. Um, and we'll also, um, our eight percent, we just spent basically two percent of that.
So probably without watch D R P O.
It's the, the gross, um.
I think it's general revenue tax levy.
The general, um, revenue tax levy.
Okay.
That we did with your, from.
It's, it's on your report. Thank you, Serena.
Good morning. Any questions? Okay, and you'll see that on the back of, of the monthly report, I, there's a, what we spent per section. Do you have any questions about any of that?
I was just surprised to see that outpatient costs more than inpatient this time. That's very unusual.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we have uh, people going for outpatient x-rays and labs and stuff.
Excuse me. But I mean, we have one person in the hospital and one person outpatient in the hospital.
Yes.
And it was almost twice as much. And they're still doing a great job managing the cost.
You're welcome, Nick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number twenty.
I'm going to approve the Aransas County intelligent healthcare inquiry for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to fiscal year twenty twenty.
Second.
Got a motion second.
Do you have any questions, um, in regards to what we pay for the sections that we, we, um, take care of, such as physician services, the prescriptions or anything?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Cheney.
Hi.
Commissioner Cashline.
Hi.
Commissioner Russo.
Hi.
Commissioner Dootnick.
Hi.
Judge Garz.
Hi, motion passes. Item number twenty-one.
But before we move.
Oh, come on, really quick.
I, I just want to ask our legal counsel regarding that grant award, and I'm sorry, what, I don't know what's going on with my voice in here. The agenda language was to approve accepting that eighty-dollar, eighty-dollar, eighty thousand fund award. But part of that is the sub-recipient form has to be submitted by the judge and sent back no later than September twelfth. Should we have amended that motion to include that, or since that's in the background, will that stand?
That's part of the motion, then. It should be, um.
It's part of accepting that. It's part of accepting.
I thank you. Sorry, that's a rough.
Uh, item number twenty-one.
My last one. Did we vote on?
We did vote. Yep.
I moved to approve updated job description for the director and senior IT technician role in Information Technology Department. No new moves.
Got a motion and a second. Mr. Jackson.
Good morning. So I was working with the group to, um, reorganize my department as well as update my job description, which had many, many, many moons. Uh, and so just kind of clarified the format and brought it in line with, uh, other offices' job descriptions and how they're formatted, as well as updated the language in the job description to meet current regulations, policies, and.
Basically, when you're off or out rush.
And I am also intending to create, which it looks like that agenda I have not left off.
Yeah, as I was going to say, if you're missing something.
The agenda. I'm not sure if we can proceed with creating that.
Not today.
But this is updating and at least promoting duties and creating, um, final goal will be to create assistant director positions as well as update the senior technician position for my department and then leave a vacant position for filling much later in the future when we figure out our needs in the new courthouse and beyond.
So right now, we are discussing the updated job descriptions for the director and senior IT tech roles, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So this agenda language superseding this one.
Uh, so the, the actual agenda is superseding the, the agenda memo language.
Okay. I would like to suggest, which I've done for other departments when this sort of an issue came up, that we convert the current assistant IT tech job position to the new senior IT tech position, rather than creating another position, which just continues to expand the number of employees in the county. And I understand what you're interested in doing at some point.
I do actually have currently a senior tech position and an assistant senior and an assistant tech position in the department. Um, I'm creating a new position for a, an assistant director position, which would have, and then move Judy to the senior position. Uh, as a senior technician.
In the background says that you, uh, have no plan to build a position in this budget year or in the twenty twenty-six budget year.
Right. I, I, there is now intention to fill that existing position. They, they are not vacant. But I would like to keep the job description on record at least.
Not fill it and not budget for it either.
Right. Maybe it would be an unbudgeted position, but the job description would be there, I guess you could say mothball for future use.
Do we ever have unbudgeted positions? I thought if there's a position in an apartment, it usually has a salary line item.
Um, we normally have used this as an interchangeable. So she, you know, what what her most recent one was the chief court clerk, I think, in the J P one or J P two. Uh so and that's how we have always. When wanting to create something like this and leave it unbudgeted, not adding a position. Like, you know. With a budget.
But there's still a position sitting there.
There is still a position sitting there. And it that's more so, I think, on our H R side.
Right. And so when we did. The change in the job description to, I believe it was take a court clerk, make it a chief court clerk. Didn't we then eliminate the court clerk position?
No, ma'am. We did not eliminate it. It is still available, but not to use as a second position. It's an interchangeable position. So once if the chief court clerk were to leave. Then somebody would be hired in at the court clerk position.
Okay. So in this situation. If someone is hired in as the senior I T tech, the assistant I T tech position will not be filled.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It must. If that senior I T tech person wants to. Uh leave the county, you would could bring somebody in as a as a system.
Correct.
Alright, any other questions for Colin?
Mister. Mister Castline. Mister Russo.
Hi.
Mister Dubnick.
Hi.
Judge Garson.
Uh motion passes. I number twenty two.
Who did approve. Five potter during the month leading for.
You have the report. Do you have any questions?
Isn't this the August we put? It says July on here, but I think it's August, isn't it?
Yes.
Hmm.
Mine also says August.
Yeah, oh, in the background, information that.
Oh, and.
It says it says July.
On our agenda, it says it's just all of the July twenty five. I think that's the motion that was made.
That should be.
So can we amend it to say August?
So it is the August?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, we need to amend that motion.
I didn't mean.
Can you amend it? So it's wrong on that, Jim.
I think we can wait till next meeting. I mean, it's not anything that.
Alright.
I would move to take a look till in the conference then.
Motion floor sit table.
Mister Cheney.
Hi.
Mister Castline.
Hi.
Mister Russo.
Hi.
Mister Dubnick.
Hi.
Judge Garson.
Hi, motion is table. I number twenty three.
Move to approve accounts payable, payroll, payroll.
Mister Cheney.
Hi.
Mister Castline.
Hi.
Mister Russo.
I want to know if the auditor has any.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Actually, I was running out of meat, so I was sorry. Uh. These are normal payroll, payroll and accounts payable. As I said earlier, the motion that you did will cover the second has to be paid. Also, um I'm talk about the payment in lieu of taxes or the revenue sharing. And I did have the note on here. The school was going to get sixty four thousand four eighty seven seventy five. And the NAD district is two thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars and forty three cents. We do have invoices from Lloyd Gosling that total a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty two dollars and ninety five cents. That is for multiple uh invoices. In fourth. Fund for thirty, which is our grant uh funds. We have Grant Works under the C two seventy, which. We're all very familiar with that. The we have Grant Works have been paying forty eight thousand, it's only twenty one dollars and twenty eight cents. Uh L C R with their final invoice and retainage. For Southwest of two hundred and fifty thousand seven, nine hundred and seventy dollars and sixty five cents. And New Stout. Where the Rattlesnake White Road uh retainage was two thousand, or two hundred and seventy thousand. Six hundred and eighty dollars and fifty one cents. All of those streets and drainage projects are complete. This completes all payment every all of their uh payrolls and the others that were a hundred percent certified. So the only thing we have left in the C two seventy is our uh meetings. The M I N program has started. We've got invoices from Grant Works totaling eighty three thousand, five hundred and twenty seven dollars and seventy cents. We pay Hanson Engineering a hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And Kate Dawson is doing.
Wait, wait, what? Hanson was how much did you say?
One hundred. And eight, one hundred and thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. They are the engineer for both the Fulton Streets as well as the Lamar Bridge. Um Kate Dawson is the engineer is doing the the uh county's flood plane. Flood plan. For the flood plane. I'm I'm wanting to say. We paid in six thousand, eight hundred and seventy five dollars. The S B twenty two, we purchased a tactical vest for seven hundred and eighty one dollars and twenty cents. And for uh. The downtown anchor. We paid Aaron's Electric a hundred and thirty five dollars to repair a hole, a black hole that was damaged.
That the one in the parking lot?
No, this one was in the plaza. Right by the. Right by the plaza. Um those are unless there are any other questions, those are the ones that I wanted to point out.
Alright, thank you.
Mister Cheney.
Hi.
Mister Castline.
Hi.
Mister Russo.
Hi.
Mister Dubnick.
Hi.
Judge Garson.
Hi, motion passes. At this time, we hear from a report from commissioners, elected officials and department heads. No action will be taken.
I have some. Um. I'm and not this legislative, it's just legislative session, but the one prior. When they removed that one dollar per filing in my office. I was worried that we would not be able to make the full cofile payment. Well, that has come to fruition. We're going to be about forty seven thousand dollars short in this year's payment to cofile. For the um mold remediation. Imaging and archive. That cofile has been doing for us. Um this is separate from the storage contract. Um in that contract, it does state that if we can't make that payment, that they will, it doesn't. We're not going to get penalized or anything like that. We we do have to make it up before we get all those records back. Um. So I'm not sure how that's going to happen because I'm assuming this. One dollar less is going to continue to bring in less money as we go along. So next year, we'll probably not be able to make that full payment as well. These funds come directly from the records management and archive management funds that are set up by the state. They have their own separate P L codes and that's the only money that we have set in the contract to pay with. That's why we're allowed to vary that when we can. And I would still like a defined uh process for who to send contracts to. Um I I need every department head and elected official needs that information. Um. The after Fred mentioned the normal cofile payment, it's two hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty eight dollars and sixty four cents. And this year, we're paying an even one hundred and fifty five thousand. That that leaves us forty seven thousand short. Thank you.
We need budget more for that.
We that comes out of those. It comes directly from the files of these.
Oh, wow, okay.
It the only other way to pay it in full would be pulling it out of general fund.
Alright, anybody else? Go. At this hour, we hear from reports about items of community interest. No action be taken? Alright. You have a motion. When we get the motion for closed session, we don't need to read I through or one through four.
I move. We adjourn and we want to close session in accordance with Texas government code section. Five five one dot zero seven one. To consult with counsel and receive legal advice about pending matters, including but not limited. Any item posted on the agenda and items listed below. Downtown anchor project, including the county's admissible actions under its various contracts. And reports on proposed mediation, insurance claims and or formal review. And discuss personnel matter and update the court on future plans involving this personnel matter pursuant to section. Five five one dot seven four of the Texas meetings that. Personnel matters, quotes, meaning, A, this chapter does not require a governmental body to conduct an open meeting. One. To deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline. Or dismissal of a public officer going forth to. To hear a complaint or charge against an officer or employee. B, subsection A does not apply if the office or employee was subject of the deliberation or hearing request of.
Do I have a second? Second, got a motion second.
Mister Cheney. Mister Castline.
Hi.
Mister Russo.
Hi.
Mister Dubnick.
Hi.
Judge Garson.
Hi. We'll take about an eight minute break and then reconvene.
I move to reconvene back into open session.
Okay.
Got a motion, second.
Mr. Cheney.
Aye.
Mr. Cashline.
Aye.
Commissioner Russo.
Aye.
Commissioner Duett.
Aye.
Phil Charison.
Hi. We're in open session. We have nothing to approve. That was discussed in closed session. Do I motion adjourn?
Move to order.
Mr. Cheney.
Aye.
Mr. Cashline.
Aye.
Commissioner Russo.
Aye.
Commissioner Duett.
I'm Phil Charison.
Hi. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Marcia.